Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Wareham School Committee. Today is Thursday, August 20th, 2020. If everyone would just stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag, the United States of America, and to your power, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, I should have said earlier that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast by WCTV tonight. The first item on the agenda is public participation. Anyone here to address the committee? I will note at this time that the school committee today is in receipt of many letters, and some of those letters requested that they be read at tonight's meeting. However, because the subject of the letters is an item that is a part of a negotiation at this time, those letters will not be read during public participation, but I would like to just acknowledge that they have been received today by the school committee. Also, so I don't know if you just heard what I said about the matter that's a part of a negotiation. So I'm happy to have anyone who's here to address the committee, but we will not be taking public participation having to do with anything to do with that's part of a negotiation.
So I can't say anything about my job?
Per our school council this evening, I was told.
But can I?
If it has to do with the item that's part of a negotiation, no, I wouldn't be able to.
Well, I think they're allowed to speak. We just, you know, we hope us not to respond at this time, but it's up to them if they want to speak.
If they're, I'm happy to have them speak, just not on the subject that's part of a negotiation.
I am waiting for work from MTA.
Okay, all right.
We can go back, right?
I'm sorry?
Go back to public participation.
We can come back to public participation. You know, as I explained, I'm just going on the advice of the school council. But I will, I will wait, and we'll come back to public participation at the end, if that's okay. So the next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. The first meeting is June 18th. There's three sets of minutes, so we'll go one by one.
I move to approve the minutes of the meeting, June 18th, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Abstained. I wasn't on the board then.
Oh, okay. All right, so 4-0-1. And then the next is the meeting of July 2nd.
I move to approve the minutes from July 2nd.
Okay. Is there a second? Any discussion?
Yeah. Let me raise my hand first.
Okay.
I don't think these are okay to vote on at this time, only because this was a remote meeting, and there should be roll call votes, and there's no roll call votes on the minutes. So if we could just come back to this one.
Okay. So you're just saying they were roll call votes?
Well, they were, they were actual, during the meeting, there were roll call votes, but that needs to be reflected in the minutes.
Okay. Could we make a change here to the minutes, or did you want to see something different?
Well, no. So I would say Ms. Wickston would have to review the meeting video and then get back to us.
Okay.
You know, to put the proper names in and such. Do you know what I mean?
Oh, for the roll call vote.
Yeah. Because right now, it just says, you know, yea three, nay two. You don't know who voted what.
Okay.
So should I recall my motion? Because I made a motion to approve them?
There's a motion and a second, so you can, what's the appropriate word? Rescind?
Correct. Rescind. So I rescind my motion.
Okay.
What, does the secondor agree?
I agree.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll just come back to these minutes at the next meeting.
So then I'll make a motion to table this, these meeting minutes, and so the, my handy calendar here, September 3rd meeting.
Is that the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. So is there a second?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? Okay, 5-0-0 to table those minutes to the next. The next meeting is July 15th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Okay. Next on the agenda is acceptance of gifts.
Yes, I would recommend that the school committee vote to accept AT&amp;T Your Cause Giving Campaign in the amount of $2 for the Wareham High School.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the overview reopening of the schools.
Okay, well, maybe, oops, I see something. Okay. So, as you know, we sent out a student enrollment to all parents. We asked them to complete it, and they had to choose for their child either hybrid or remote learning. So the results of the enrollment forms, we had, we have 1,292 students currently enrolled in the hybrid program, and we have 551 students who have chosen to be remote this year. So we broke this down for you so you could see exactly where each school is at. Deccus has 401 students choosing hybrid, 146 remote. We're currently trying to notify 40 families. In Minnet, we have 182 in the hybrid, and 50 remote, and we're looking to locate 22. At the middle school, we have 326 in the hybrid, and 177 in remote, and we're looking to locate 23. At the high school, we have 383 students choosing the hybrid program, and 178 in the remote, and we're looking to notify 25. So we also received word about the sports season for the year. And right now, our fall sports season will start on September 18th, and the sports will be boys and girls soccer, gymnastics, cross country, field hockey, volleyball, swimming, golf, and dance. Now, of course, we don't have all of those sports, but the ones that we do, we'll be able to begin season on the 18th. However, before that occurs, what we have to do is to attest a compliance form that will follow the certain regulations. I'm meeting, tomorrow, there's a large meeting with the athletic folks around the conference to develop schedule and some other information. And what we're looking to do is to create a fall season within our league, so there won't be a lot of traveling. And then they've also voted that there will be no postseason tournaments for the fall. The one thing that we're particularly happy about is the fact that football can compete in the season in February to, I think it's March.
April.
April. So we'll be able to have certain activities for our students that normally would happen in the fall, but it will be pushed, pushed forward. So this is good news, and as long as we stay in the certain guidelines, then we will be able to have sports for our students. This is Dr. Yoffe.
Is it all right if I ask a question now?
Yep.
It actually has to do with the previous slide on the hybrid and the remote. Have you had anyone actually say that they would not want to do either? That, you know, they're afraid about in-person, about the COVID-19, and, but they don't want to do remote because their child won't participate?
We, I haven't heard that comment. That's not saying that it hasn't been said. We've also received 40 homeschool applications at this point. And I'm not, at this time this year, that's a little bit higher than normal, so we're kind of watching that as well.
So if you have someone like that, what would you tell them to do?
That they didn't want to do either? Why? Well, I think that's where we would have to have some, our principal and our counselors, we would have to get why, and what things we could put in place that would be helpful and doable.
Okay.
I mean, that's our job.
Yeah. Or maybe you would tell them they have to do homeschooling? I don't know.
Well, we'd really like to keep them connected. So if there's anything that we could possibly do to work with them, that's our goal.
Right. Go ahead. Thank you.
Were the hybrid versus remote numbers, it looks like, I think they were, it looks like they're higher than I think what you may have been anticipating. How is that going to affect the distancing requirements in each building?
Well, students are going to be divided into two cohorts. And so one cohort will attend school on Monday and Tuesday. Wednesday is deep clean day, and then the second cohort, Thursday and Friday. So it really, I mean, those numbers will pretty much balance themselves. Does that answer your question?
Yep, thank you.
Okay. All right. So finally, just, you know, a few more pieces of information. We were a little surprised, as many families were yesterday, when the, it came out that the flu, influenza vaccination would be required for all students. Students must have that by December 31st. There are exemptions. This applies to all students. So whether they're remote or whether they're hybrid, this mandate will affect them. And as far as, as we prepare to open our school, we're going to be looking to increase custodial staff. We're going to be hiring some seasonal custodians, as well as a CNA in every nursing office. So we're going to look to hire a total of four CNAs to help out with health care and just any processes that we need additional health care help. So that kind of gives you an overview. So what else we've been doing is, there's been a tremendous amount of work in developing templates, so everything is common. So if a parent has a child at Deccus or a child at the middle school, when they open up the page, they will see the same template, and then they'll just go off from there. What we thought would be very helpful for you, at the next meeting, we're going to show you what that will look like, and then we'll take you to different teachers' pages so you can see what a parent will see.
Is there any way to link any of that through Power School? Because I know that parents, you can connect all of your children are connected on Power School. Is there a way to have all of their accessibility through that, or no?
No.
It's really through Google Classroom.
Okay. I just wasn't sure if, like, Power School was set up that it would link to Google Classroom or anything like that.
No, because Power School has a competing, they have a competing learning management system, and so they, and we're already a Google learning management system, so they have to stay separate.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
Thank you.
Yep.
And then, so right now, our buildings are getting the list ready. They're being passed to transportation. We have transportation here to give you an update on where we're at. So if you have any more questions, I'm happy to answer it. If not...
Just have one question on the athletics. I know we're trying to go to a hybrid eventually, that's the plan, but if a school is deciding to go fully remote, is the state still sanctioning them to allow to play athletics after school if they're not meeting in school?
Yeah, it's my understanding that no.
Okay.
Yeah, they've changed their tune a bit.
Thank you.
So does that mean that Wareham is still eligible to participate because we plan to move to remote? I mean, to hybrid, sorry.
Well, we would have been able to with remote. He made that statement in a meeting and had to rescind the statement later about if they're remote, they can't play sports, the commissioner said. And so he had to rescind that comment after discussion.
So they can play sports if they're remote?
They can.
Which part of me likes, but the other part of me says that doesn't make...
Well, if they're, if they're not coming to school because they're afraid of COVID, the likelihood that they're coming for sports is not high, but you can't necessarily exclude them either. So it's just, it's a dicey situation, I suppose.
Well, I guess I was asking because our students will be remote, all of them will be remote to start.
So if this covers, sorry, if this covers the sports season, you know, that that will be allowed to happen, does that mean that other activities like drama and art and other extracurriculars are going to be allowed to participate with regulations as well if sports are?
I think that's something that we're working on, because we know it's very important to students, but we just have to work that out and how, if it's going to be remote. So that's still in progress.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions?
I just had a question about communication with families. So obviously, the school year is going to look different than any other, especially because it's the beginning of a school year. So how is that being communicated to parents?
Which part?
Which part? Everything? Yeah.
All of it?
Yeah, all of it.
All of it?
Yeah.
Well, you know, our, the other day, Deccus had a parent forum, a Zoom parent forum. We're hoping that other schools also have that. We know that there's been emails going out to parents. We're getting ready to have Chromebooks picked up, so information's going to start rolling out on a regular basis.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, so next on the agenda is the report from the Transportation Department, and Jamie Andrews.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Welcome.
Do I have to introduce myself?
Sure, go ahead.
Jamie Andrews, Transportation Facilities Director. I'm just here to give you a quick, some quick stuff. Can I give you guys handouts? Is that allowed?
We don't have whatever you have in your hands.
I'm going to give it to you, is that okay?
Yeah, oh yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Thank you.
Do you want one to talk from?
I got one.
Okay.
All right, this is the figure that Desi has pretty much gave me as my guideline of a 77-passenger bus, which is our regular school bus. This is a capacity, so I'm at 25. Siblings can sit together, but it doesn't give me any more than 25 regardless. So as you can see in the model, 12 on one side, we want to keep behind the bus driver clear, because that's pretty much the only protection I can give the bus driver, besides obviously a face covering, having nobody sit behind them, since we can't legally, by the state guidelines, we can't put anything to barricade the driver or anything like that. So the best we've, pretty much the state has come up with, is leaving the seat behind them empty. So I just wanted to give you guys this so you have an idea of how we have to plan out. So coming into today, we have 1,986 students that are eligible to ride the bus. That's K through 12, or K through 13.
Excuse me, how many?
1,986.
All right, thank you.
And I have 758 applications. So that leaves me roughly about 1,228 that have yet to fill out an application. So to me, it tells me that they are either staying remote all year, or as long as they can, or they're getting their own transportation when school does resume. So I'm not worried about routing them on a bus.
What were last year's numbers?
Higher than this. We, off the top, we probably, we're at the same amount of buses as last year, but obviously the population is cut in half. In an elementary, it's cut in a third.
Yeah.
So that's what it looks like as far as what we have there. So as of right now, I have, the applications I have, probably about 16 big buses, give or take, depending on how many kids actually, when I get all the numbers in as far as who wants to stay remote, who wants to go hybrid. Obviously, kids that are on the non-serviceable area, a mile and under, have to find their own ride to school. One of the big things that's been called about my office is the topic of variances. For anyone who doesn't know what a variance is, it is any location that is not your home. So what we bus now is home to school and school to home, but every student can fill out a variance, which will allow you to go to another location, whether it's a daycare, grandma's house, whatever the parent needs you to go so they can work. So the biggest question we've been getting is, can we fill them out? I'm hearing a lot of people telling me, schools have said no, this one said no, this one said yes. So I'm just trying to make it, get the record out there, knowing that I'm encouraging people to fill out the variances. It doesn't guarantee that I'm going to grant it, because I'm not able to because of capacity-wise, because my first responsibility is to get the kids to and from school. So like years before, the variances are granted if there's room allows them to. But we want you to fill them out. They come first, come first serve, and we put them in order as we get them. So parents, that seems to be the biggest topic, so I just want to make sure people understand.
So we, you said that currently with the numbers of the 758 applications that you have now, that would cover 16 buses roughly with the capacity. How many buses total do we have in our fleet at the moment?
Including specialized transportation, we're right around 30, I think.
Okay.
That's including buses that are spare buses that are not the greatest, but...
Okay, so hypothetically, if people are able to fill out variances, there could be, like, say, one dedicated bus at this time, assuming that this other 1,200 and something, people don't, you know, come in trying to request just standard transportation, like hypothetically, there could be a dedicated bus for the, like, say, the Boys and Girls Club because of ability, like, space at the moment? Like, if enough people fill out a variance to fill that bus just to go there for childcare, that's a possibility. Not saying that it could happen, but if...
It's something we would look at.
Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say definite, I don't worry, but it's something we can review.
Thank you.
I think what, our position at this point is that we are not granting variances. If a parent needs to take a child from a daycare, they want their child to go to daycare, right now, we're saying, if you're saying we'll pick them up at the daycare and we'll drop them back at the daycare, that's fine, but for us to pick them up at home and then take them to a different location after school, we're not able to do that.
So only if they're, so if the parent drives to, say, the Boys and Girls Club in the morning, and in onset is their pickup, then they can get dropped back off there in the afternoon?
Right.
Should they require them?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so, and that was my recollection, too. But you're saying that there's a possibility for, there might be opportunity to allow variances in the future, and that'll be based on what?
It's all based on, it's always been based on availability.
See, now that's where I'm getting really confused, because I didn't think it had less to do with availability and more about safety and moving those cohorts, and I thought it was just going to be non-negotiable and wasn't going to happen.
That was my understanding.
So there's some serious mixed signals coming out from here right now, so we need this clarified now.
Variances should, in my opinion, variant, there should be...
But is it your opinion, or is it the policy we voted?
Well, I don't know what the policy you voted was.
We did not vote anything, but what was decided was, we are not doing variances this year because of safety concerns and the fact that we cannot bus everyone to and from school that we're obligated to if we have to move other kids onto that bus in the afternoon. That throws everything off. So we were not doing variances, period.
So that there will be no opportunity for variances this year, period?
Right.
All right.
Is that, that's fine. I'd like to know so the parents, when they tell me, we can all be on the same page.
But I'm on the school committee, and now I'm confused, or now I'm clarified, but this is very confusing that you can understand why parents are upset.
100%.
This is...
And what we told them was, if you want a variance, you have to be picked up at your spot where you want to come from, or be dropped off in the afternoon. So if I go to the Y, I need to be picked up at the Y in the morning, and then I'll bring, we'll bring you back there in the afternoon. That's not a variance.
Yeah, I wouldn't call that a variance.
Right.
Yeah, no, I agree.
And that's what we decided to follow.
And I've had, I've had a parent work with you, and she was really happy with how that worked out, and I understand, I'm glad it worked out. That's how it was meant to work out. But there'll be no real variances this year.
No.
No. It'll pretty much like a best friend's daycare. If you get picked up there in the morning, you can get dropped there in the afternoon.
But you understand when the transportation director is saying there could be opportunity for variances if we have the space, it's really, it throws mixed messages out there.
I understand. Now we're on, now we're on the same page. That works for me. Any other questions?
Yeah.
All right, any other questions?
So right now, we're confident that we can transport the numbers that's saying they're coming and follow the social distance and guidelines of the state?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
100%.
So at a past meeting, it was stated that you had received so many applications and that the buses were full. So is now that, that families have had the opportunity to choose hybrid or remote, is that still true?
We're still getting all the information in, so we've been, as they come in from the schools, we've been taking them off the bus if they said they're going to go remote. So that's opened up some room on some buses, yes.
Okay.
But until, we're going to say that the buses are full, but once they divide the cohorts into two, then obviously your numbers are going to, I'm going to take in 100 and some kids on Monday and Tuesday, the numbers will work a lot better, once we split them in their cohorts and have the days picked out.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So are you still, like, was the date for, I know that there was initially a date for transportation, they had to be decided or filled out by a certain date, and we had still, I think at that point, we're still voting on whether or not we were doing the hybrid or the remote model. So has that date now been extended to parents have a specific date that they can, if they have not yet submitted their bus or transportation needs, that they still can do so and be able to get on a bus, considering we still have almost half of a fleet available?
Yeah, I've been receiving applications that haven't stopped. The last one I got was two days ago. So they're constantly coming in, but it's slowed down.
Do we have a date that we need them absolutely by so that we can make sure to communicate that to the public so that they know that by XYZ date, there's no more after this? Like, I know that obviously people were upset initially because we hadn't voted yet when the original date was, but if we have a newer date to give them, that would give you enough time to logistically work things out, is that something that we can come up with?
I think so. I think a deadline would be best. Once the deadline's in place, and I can, once it's over, I can shut it off, plan my routes, and have everything going forward.
We'll make that public.
Okay.
We will have a deadline.
Okay, well, I guess if there are no other questions, thank you.
All right.
For coming.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Jamie.
Uh, next on the agenda is a vote on the memorandum of understanding with WEA relative to the Unit A contract.
Yes.
And Chairman Backyaki, I have to recuse myself from this per guidance from Mass Ethics Commission because of my relationship with two teachers in the district.
Okay.
And I must also submit a disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest form that I'll give to Ms. Wixton.
Okay.
At this time, so I will leave the room while you're having this discussion and vote, and then I will rejoin, rejoin you.
I will send you a text when we're done.
Thank you.
Okay, so you received the copy of the MOA, and I'll just briefly run through the changes. In the first change, under length of work year and work day, there are three workdays without students. Prior to this, there were four. Under teacher prep time and workload, Article twenty-one, taken out is after making reasonable efforts, if it's not feasible to provide daily blocks, the committee may schedule a teacher for multiple blocks on the same day. That was removed. On Article twenty-six, professional development, director of curriculum was taken out, and assistant superintendent was inserted. Under Article thirty, on salaries, the number of days was one eighty-four, inserted has been one eighty-three. The duration for this agreement is one year, from September first through August thirty-first, twenty-one. And it will automatically agree, November twenty-twenty, twenty nineteen was taken out. Under Appendix A, beginning the sixteenth pay, the salary will increase by one percent. And then placement on the salary scale would be equivalent to the number of years teaching. And for example, a second-year teacher will be placed on the second step moving forward, and they will advance to the next step on August thirty-first, twenty-one. So what that means is, if this year, everybody froze their pay until the sixteenth pay, they will receive a one percent increase. When we get ready to negotiate again, everybody will be moved to the next step, so they've not lost a step because of their agreement of holding for this year. So I would ask the committee to please vote approval to the MOA.
Move to approve?
Okay. Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? So the vote is four zero zero.
And I just want to thank everyone for their time that they put in for this. I was, this was back when I was on that unit for negotiations, and we had very large meetings with the teachers, about seventy-plus teachers on Zoom. So people were heard.
Okay, thank you. So move on to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you. I would ask that the committee vote to approve both the bill and payroll warrants as listed in the newsletter.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, Kevin. I didn't text you, thank you for coming back. So let's back up. So we're voting approval of the bill payments and warrants in the superintendent's newsletter. Okay. All right, so let's do that again. We have a second, and a motion and a second, let's just vote again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Five zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that the end of your report for today?
That's it.
Okay. So the next item is on the agenda is any other business. But before that, I will back up to public participation. I will allow those who are here to speak, because I would never want to say that you couldn't speak. But I will caution you that the school committee has been advised by legal counsel not to participate in that conversation. So you can speak, but we are not able to, and I don't want that to be taken as anything else, except, you know, like I said, on advice of counsel, only because it's an item for negotiation. So anyone who is here to address the committee, I would invite you up at this time. Hello.
Welcome.
Is it on?
The green?
Sounds like it. Yep, okay. I'm here tonight, as I have been before you many, many times before, in support of the para professionals, the Unit C members of our association. In the spring, we were all catapulted into crisis mode, and on the whole, they rose to the occasion and even above. And I just think that that should be recognized. They work very hard, and they are the backbone sometimes of the school. They're the ones that the students work closest with. The students feel very comfortable with them. They build relationships. And so I did receive part of our professional development, and in looking at this professional development, it looks like great, great stuff is being offered, and I'm excited about it. And it looks like the paras could really benefit from all of this training, such as social emotional learning, which we know is going to be a big piece when we return remotely and when we go in person. That's important training that they would need to have, most definitely. They're going to be working with students on these learning platforms. They need the training on the technology, so I'm glad to see that that's being offered to teachers and hopefully, to paras as well. And, yeah, I mean, there's so much virtual learning stuff that we're going to need to do, and team building with our, our grade levels, and I just think it's important that they be on board one hundred percent with us teachers, planning alongside, is very important. And I just wanted that known, and I will end it there. I appreciate you giving me the time, thank you.
Thank you, Dana.
Hello, I'm Marjorie Rakowski.
Welcome.
A para at Wayham High School. I just finished my thirty-second year in June of being a para. And I'm looking forward to September. Everybody says, when are you going to retire? When I don't like my job, because it's not a job. And obviously, you people know what we get paid. But what I'm saying is, I do it for the kids. When I first started, I worked in special needs. Then I went to the adjustment class. That was an eye-opener. And now, then I went to alternative. Now, today, I do in-school suspension and anything else that they need. I even took over for a teacher that had nervous breakdown, and when I was in that classroom and stuff. I never, have never missed any of the training that the teachers have had, because we're doing the same thing that you are doing, so that we should have the same training. Because if you don't train us, or if you don't show us, what are we supposed to just, you know, whatever? And then they have to, God forbid, something's happening, and then we don't know what to do, we got to wait for our teacher to say, oh, well, this is what we learnt. It shouldn't be that way. Kids come first. You know, I'm not, I'm not here for the money, that's for sure, but I mean, I'm here for the kids. And if I can help a kid get through this bad time that he had because of this crazy virus, I'll be more than willing to do it. I'll be more than willing to sit, I've sat this past summer at a child's house, six feet apart, both had masks on. But he was having such a hard, hard time, and his mother couldn't even handle him. By the time I got done, he was laughing. You know, I have that kind of connection with the, I want to say, the behavior kids. But there's no such thing as an unwanted child. You know, there's no such thing as a throwaway child, no matter what. So if they need the extra help, I'll give it to them. If I get the training or not, I'll figure it out one way or the other, you know? But we shouldn't be thrown under the door, you know, under the bus, I should say, that six feet apart. But I love what I do, and I love my behavior kids, and my special needs kids. And if I can help them, I will. You know, I just, you have to think of the whole picture, because somebody's going to have to train us. If we're not trained with all, everybody, then you're going to have to train us. So, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello.
My name is Jamie Pelletier, I am also a para at the high school.
Welcome.
I haven't been here quite as long as Marjorie, but I am going into my sixth year. And I just wrote something up that I wanted to say on behalf of the para professionals in our district. The entire school community is navigating new territory, from families to central administration. Nothing about this situation is easy or known, as it's never been done before. Myself and my fellow colleagues have been preparing for months leading up to the return to school. The unknowns are plentiful, but the constant study has always been the dedication of the Wayham staff to provide the best learning environment for our students. Thus, this environment is made up of teachers, families, and support staff such as paras. I'm not sure if the committee realizes exactly what para professionals provide our students. We are their personal cheerleaders, their emotional support, a place they can find in and look to for help with assignments. We hold them accountable while holding an imaginary safety net, ready to catch them and lift them back up towards success. For the population of students we work with, we are their life jacket. We support the teacher the same way. These students who come to us with a variety of needs, and we work like acrobats to meet them alongside their teachers. It's truly a team effort, and paras should be included in all para professional development, as sometimes, we work closer with the students than teachers themselves. The teachers are being trained in social emotional learning as well as new teaching methods. So should the paras, so we have a better understanding of the challenges that lay ahead of us, whether remote or in-person. What strategies we should employ, what we can and cannot do, what the setup is, what the plan is, and how to support all involved in the best way. If the teacher is designing remote learning and planning and mapping out how the parts all work together, we should be there to offer insight. We are some of those moving pieces the teacher will need to design around. We are experienced professionals who can collaborate and be built into the design of the 2021 school year. By definition, para means to be alongside. How can we be effectively alongside our colleagues or our students if we are caught out of training to prepare for this new uncharted territory? To leave paras out of this professional development would be detrimental to our student body. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hi. My name is Sarah Green, and I'm a special education teacher. And I just wanted to speak to the value of para professionals. So I started working in the therapeutic learning center at the Deacon School, then the lower learning center, and this year, I will be moving to the ASD room at the middle school. All of these programs are substantially separate classrooms, they're multi-grade, multi-age, multi-skill level. And with that comes a lot of differentiation and adult support. The para professionals I have been grateful to work with are just that, they are professional. They support student academic and social emotional development, they provide direct instruction to address identified IEP goals, and ensure that students are provided with appropriate and supervised learning opportunities in the general education setting. Para professionals have an integral role in meeting IEP benchmarks and ensuring that students are educated in the least restrictive environment. This, of course, is during normal circumstances. Since March thirteenth, para professionals have continued to meet the needs of students remotely. They've attended our daily Zoom activities, posted on our Google classrooms, provided students with feedback, and maintained relationships with students through letters, emails, and video conferencing check-ins, with of course, parent support. We regularly collaborated and reflected upon activities and lessons that occurred via Zoom. We shared what worked, what didn't work, how could we revise, do breakout rooms via Zoom, and just basically meet the needs of all of our students through, you know, remote learning during the spring through summer school. One of my para professionals created two sets of hands-on activities, one for herself to use as a model, and one for the student, so she could continue to provide discreet trial training for that student on the spectrum. And she did that via virtual video conferencing. Our para professionals continued via remote learning to provide for our students. We are in unprecedented territory, obviously, and it is challenging to navigate all of these unknowns during the pandemic, but it has been my experience that the para professionals of Wayham Public Schools continue to provide an essential service in supporting the academic, social, and emotional growth of our students. And I'm forever grateful to the para professionals I've had the pleasure to work with, they're all here. And I would, it would be remiss of us to, that their contributions be underestimated and undervalued. So thank you very much for your time, and I will love...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Erin Worlitzer, and I'm a certified occupational therapy assistant for the town of Wayham, but we are under the para professional contract, so I wanted to just speak on behalf of what myself and the speech and language assistants do. So I'm a Unit C member, I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of the other assistants in the district I work with that provide occupational therapy and speech and language therapy, who are assistants to the profession in under Unit C. I would like to address what I do for the students in our district prior to the start of the school year, and also our qualifications. Occupational therapy assistants and speech and language assistants have to have a license to practice in Massachusetts. Every two years, both professions have to renew that license with the state of Massachusetts. Occupational therapy assistants are required to pass a national board exam that is equivalent to an LPN exam in order to practice. Speech and language assistants have a four-year degree in communication disorders. During the start of the school year, we schedule and see students ourselves, up to forty or more children, starting the first week of school. We develop and implement our therapy sessions based on the goal and objectives outlined in the child's IEP. We meet with our supervisors to discuss caseloads, we attend annual review meetings and write progress notes for every student that we see, and are required to sign using our specialized credentials. We consult with teachers and parents, we provide direct services, we do telehealth PD and provide our sessions during Zoom and in-person. We are required by the state to have thirty continuing education hours in order to keep our license. We create all of our lessons to assess the students' individual needs per their IEP, which we need time to plan. Also, making our schedule to service students is very time-consuming, as we have to talk to teachers and specialists, because our students require specialized services that only we can provide. Our services to our students are very valuable to special education. Whether remote or hybrid, the students need our specialized services, and we need time to plan how we can help each individual student. Even though we are under Unit C with the para professionals, occupational therapy assistants and speech and language assistants are professional service providers who plan and schedule therapy sessions in tandem with the occupational therapist and speech and language therapists. We need this time to collaborate with our colleagues to get all the moving parts in order, and close the gap for the students, so when they return, we can hit the ground running to put together learning kits, schedules, lessons, and to get the students what they need, and set up our room for appropriate social distancing per the CDC guidelines. I would like to speak also for the para professionals, as they are an asset to the students and teachers and part of the school community. Most importantly, most of them have been a part of this district for many years and are seasoned professionals. We are all essential to the school and students, we should be there day one with our colleagues to plan and be educated on how to execute our services during these unprecedented times. Thank you for your time. And on another note, sorry, it's in another one second. Over the summer, I took off my occupational therapy hat, it worked as a para for the boost program, and Jennifer Maderos was the teacher, and I was her para, and I have this permission to share this email that she sent to Andrea Schwam, Jane Collins, and Bethany Chandler when we finished last week. She said, hello, I just wanted to give some feedback to remote boost this summer. It was amazing, we had eight out of the original eleven children participate. One student could not do the online part, so we provided the materials weekly, and the mom worked one-on-one with her child. All seven of our other students participated every day, twice a day for Zoom, and did the assignments that were assigned on their own time. All parents participated, this was amazing to see. Students were engaged with the literacy... Students were engaged with the literacy and language-rich games we played. Stories were read and shared daily. Books were written, words were practiced and small reading groups took place every day in our breakout rooms. They participated in the phonics videos that were shared and shy students shared more and more as the summer went on. Ms. Erin was a huge asset to the program and I couldn't have done it with this level of success without her. All of the feedback from parents were very positive and they were very appreciative of summer boost. Thank you again for this opportunity to make this connection with the students and parents this summer. In addition to teaching the students, we were able to give parents some helpful skills in helping their child be successful in breeding. This was essentially a program for both the students and their guardians this summer. This is a first for me. Thanks, Jennifer Maderos. This is just one of the reasons why we are so essential in the school district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the committee? Okay, then we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is any other business. Is there anyone who has any other business?
Just, um, I got the, I saw the calendar and it reminded me on September 3rd, I won't be here.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, if there's nothing else, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? 5-0-0. Thank you.